This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so right now with myself Keith Liedker, we have Mike Pepin, Susan Eastwood, Doug Beglin, and Bob is there as an alternate. So this little call here, if this Jean somehow comes in, calls in, I would say that for the dense seat, Bob is the alternate. So. And does somebody just join? Okay. So we have new business. So we do have the new business would be the variance application for 368 Ashford Center Road to consider a lot line adjustment to increase the lot size. 36,322 square feet where 9,000 square feet is required. The applicants Eric Wagner, him is Robert and Scott Maduna. And then coupled with that is the second one is the various applications for 370 Ashford Center Road to consider a lot line adjustment which will increase the lot to 40,000 or 50,000 feet is required. And which Robert and Scott Maduna. With that said, why don't we then we will now at this time and Susan I've got 72. We will adjourn to the public hearing. So the public hearing, let's take the application for 368 Ashford Center Road. And this is the request is for pressure variance for lot line adjustment. That we leave on. 368 Ashford Center Road under the zone required 9,000 feet square feet, 6,322. As for the materials located map 36 block you are 12 by 158 page 286. If we can, where we hear from Eric Wagner, please?
Yeah, sure. Can I share my screen with you guys?
Sure.
Well, am I sharing now?
No, Eric, I may be able to make you a presenter.
Yeah, because it says to share your screen, ask organizer to make you presenter.
Okay, you should be able to go ahead and share.
Okay, um, yeah. Oh wait a minute, I'm gonna push share, I guess, right? Share? Can you see that, guys? Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, again, my name is Eric Wagner. For the record, I'm the surveyor and I'm here also with Rob and Scott Maduna. They're the co-owners. This is a very unique situation. I've been a surveyor for six something years and I've never quite seen this situation. Unfortunately, Rob and Scott's mother passed away probably about a year ago, leaving the estate to Rob and Scott and now it's time to do something with it. These are the two houses that we're talking about in this area here. Scott presently lives here at this house at 368 Ashford Center Road. And this is the estate of their mother, 370 Ashford Center Road. So this lot was originally one lot. Their grandparents built this house in 1938. 1938, this house was built by their grandparents. And then when Rob and Scott's parents got married, the grandparents sold them. They split this lot basically in half, right down the middle. And Rob and Scott's parents built their house. Only what happened was the house got built on the rear of the same lot that the grandparents' house is built on and it was not built over here where it's supposed to be. They're sharing a driveway, it's a common driveway. The town has been taxing this as if this house was built over here the whole time since 1969, but the reality is both houses are on the same lot. So with the state coming up, at some point, this is gonna, when Rob and Scott figure out how they plan to move forward, at some point, these houses will separate into separate owners in the future. So this situation, we've gotta try to correct. That's what we're trying to do here. Now, let me just show you my... So that's the overall, can you see? Yeah. Okay, so what the game plan is, here's the outline of the pond right here. You guys can see that. Scott lives in this house 368. They co-own the 370, the mother's estate. And here's the original lot line, right through here, went through the middle. So this lot here is where this house was supposed to have been built. It's been taxed that way since the time it began. And this house is over here. So what we would like to do so that they can finally put these houses on 370 feet lot is we're requesting a variance or instead of a rear lot, instead of 50 feet, for 40 feet and we're gonna come up around with a line like this. And instead of having 90,000 square feet for this lot, it ends up being 86,000 square feet. Now, the reason we're requesting the 40-foot variance is the brothers would like to keep this pond on the front lot. Scott presently lives there, he has grandchildren that use the pond. And at some point, they don't want to have ownership of this pond between the two lots. They'd really like to keep the pond on the lot. And we decided they would like to have the lot line go straight back this way, which is the reason why we're asking for a little diminishing in their required square footage. Nobody wants the lot line jogging behind an existing house. So when these are different owners and this front house actually has some property behind the back to just make it work on paper, that's gonna be an uncomfortable situation over time. So that's why we're asking for the variance from a little slight dimension in the required area of 90,000 to 86,000. And that's why we're asking for the variance for a 50-foot strips, to do 40-foot strips so the pond can be on this side. This house can maintain its privacy in the backyard. We've submitted plans to Eastern Highlands Health District. It did test those soil testing. They have approved the concept for the reserve system. I believe you might have that in your package. And that's basically it, we are proposing. If I just go back to this for a minute, as I said, this common drive has been here forever. So we would be proposing a driveway easement, maintenance, maintenance and easement for both these lots through here. And this is basically just your access on paper. That's basically it. Ready to answer any questions you guys may have.
So this is... It's getting pretty far, you're asking a 40-foot front entrance at the 368.
The 40-foot is for 370, 370 is the rear one, 368 is the front one. We're asking for the diminished area for 368 and instead of a 50-foot rear lot front engine for 370, we're asking for 40 feet so that the pond can stay on the front lot. You know, unfortunately, their mom passed away, but this is a situation that they've inherited. That's been in effect since 1964.
Do you mind going back to the aerial, Eric, please?
Sure. There you go.
So the, I'm just not sure, but I didn't remember the part about the access highway, you know, driveway. So that goes in, just can you, yeah, there you go. That's the old one.
That's, that's the access driveway that will stay as is. What we're gonna do is put a driveway easement in favor of lot 370 over 368 in a mutual maintenance agreement between both 368 and 370. They'll still use the driveway as is, only there'll be this, this maintenance easement, this shaded area here. That's, that's the game plan.
Yeah, can you show me where that is on the aerial picture? I just have a hard time visualizing it. It goes by the pond, in back of the pond?
No, no, it's right here, as is.
Oh, it's the same, the same thing, okay.
If you look here, you see the driveway, I've got the driveway located right there, see it?
Oh, yes, uh, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's the driveway located.
To the left of all that, is that the abutting property owner?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
To the left of, right, okay, you're just there. Like where you have the 44 sign, is that the Route 44 marker? Is that the abutting property owner over to the, if you go to, okay, I guess maybe you're right. They're there, that's the abutting property owner, the sign.
This is one of the abutting property owner, which is, it used to be a restaurant, I guess. It certainly has gone through many hands over the years. And they own a little bit past, you know, the 40 feet or so past the pond on this side. And then if you, if I just hold this up a second here, you can see the stone wall in the back in the area? That's basically their back property line, right there. So it comes straight out, comes across and comes down through.
For everybody's benefit, Mike Demato confirmed today that he has copies of the certified marriage search to the abutting property owners.
Okay.
Are there other questions?
On this overhead, can you, can you just draw what the property line would be? Just slowly move across it?
Yeah, I think I can do that. So it's gonna come up along here, along the back. It's gonna come down here, it's gonna come over here. This is a line of bushes and trees, so it's gonna come here. And let me just see which side of those I'm on. Hang on. Okay, so it goes, so those bushes and trees are gonna remain on lot 370 and the lot line will go, so that's actually acting as screening between the two houses. So that'll come down around like that, then basically straightforward. So if I go back to here, so after you jog up around here, you come down, you come on the other side of this and then straight up. Scott uses this area over here for, he's got a picnic area and horseshoe pits and stuff like that. So, you know, he, he does actively use this, this is the historic use of the lot. And like you said, he has, his grandchildren, they like to go look at frogs and stuff in the ponds. And to, just to make the area work, now you're putting an incumbent and really on this guy for having people in his backyard if they so chose. That's why we were asking for the diminution area.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just gonna excuse myself, I've gotta get my power pack, but you can continue.
That's, that's all I have really for presentation and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's just a very unique situation. I've never seen that, where this has gone so far for so many decades in this situation.
No, you've actually come up with a reasonable plan.
Thank you. It is.
The wooded area to the right of the pond, as we're looking at it here now. That property owner, you have a document from that property owner?
Yeah, that's Gary Lawrence. He also, not only does he own on the right side, but he owns on the backside too as well.
Oh, it's the same person?
Same person. Actually know Gary Lawrence from my earlier surveying career back in the eighties when I used to work at Gatom Engineering.
I feel like I hear Jean talking. Jean, are you there?
I'm here, I don't know where to type it into Susan. I see the, I see the link, but I don't know where to type it.
Oh, you type it in like...
Address line at the top.
If you're Googling, you know, like to a Google line or any line at the top, yeah. Yeah, it wasn't a live link, at least not my, on mine, so I had to take it in.
Yeah, I, I'm listening.
Okay, well, I'll put you in as attending then.
Okay, I got my power going. Yeah, does anybody have the chance to read the memorandum from Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or anything regarding the applications?
No additional ones.
No, I don't have any.
Then switch over to 370. I think that's pretty much been covered.
Yeah, I kind of said it all in one shot there.
All right, so if there's no further questions, is there anything that the applicants would like to add before we close the public hearing?
I have nothing further.
All right, we'll close the public hearing then at 7:33 and return to the regular meeting. I believe that they have been ready for us to have a motion to discuss the applications prior to voting.
So moved? Wait, was there a second? Is there?
Second.
Okay. It was my vote, so. At this time, no new evidence can be received. Any comments or concerns from some of the members present regarding the applications?
Not for me, no comment.
I'll add, when I've read through the memorandum that Mike Demato prepared regarding the precedents set by law, there's all these situations such as, it would appear that, you know, given the situation has been described, that there is precedent that this would be allowable, that it would be in order. Does anybody have any other opinion on that, what Mike wrote?
Would this be considered a hardship based on the history of the property?
My ruling of memo would be that it would be. There would be an allowable exception. That's based on, based on some of the two citations that Mike... This would in a sense qualify.
Thank you.
So. Are we ready to proceed to a vote?
Yeah, we'd move to...
All right.
Wait, who was that? Sorry.
That was Mike.
Mike.
Mike, thank you.
Now, had June, did you join us at the beginning?
Who did you ask, Keith?
I was asking if Jean, but Jean had come on at the beginning.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It was very muffled, Keith. When I was on the phone, it was very hard to understand you, so. Maybe she, maybe she, oh, she can hear, oh, sorry, Jean.
I can understand what you're asking, are you asking for a yes or a no?
Well, we're beginning with the voting, I just wanted to make sure, Jean, that, let me make sure my sound is turned up here.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you were at the beginning of the meeting because I was looking, I didn't know if you were gonna make an answer in your absence. There had been, you know, Mike was there, it was, Bob was there, I was trying to fill in. But if you were here at the beginning, then we'll have you as count as being present as a regular member. Okay, well, it's... Okay, June. How do you vote?
I'm sorry, did we have a second? I didn't get the second.
I think Mike's, was it you, Mike, for second to vote?
I had Mike as the...
I did second, but, yeah.
He can't.
I think we need a second.
We need a second, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jean, thank you. So, is Jean seated? We didn't. This is so confusing.
This is the first meeting we've had since last October. Let's do here. So, June. How do you vote? How do you vote? Did I hear anything? Okay, I didn't, I don't know if Jean McCarthy responded.
I just made a second to that motion.
Okay. All right, we're ready to proceed to a vote then. June, how do you vote on the applications?
Yes, yes or no?
Yes.
That's correct.
Susan?
Uh, yes, I vote yes because it's a historic hardship.
Mike?
Yes. That's a large.
Bob? All right, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, I'm voting yes as well. And I look at it too, so this is an historic hardship. There's also, in accordance with some of the precedents that's been set and other matters, that this would qualify for granting of both applications. Now, what will happen is before anybody can do anything, we will get, we have to publish a notice in the Chronicle that the variance for the both applications were given and that there's a 15-day period for anybody who desires to appeal the decision. If no one appeals, then I will be sending out a letter. It will be a form that you would take to the town clerk for filing. You'll have to pay the filing suit. And then after it's filed, then that's when the variance would go on the books and you could proceed with your plans. Any questions on that?
No, thank you very much, Commission. On a day that started with me in the hospital getting surgery for hernia, this is a nice way to end the day, thank you.
It's almost probably as painful as a hernia getting started, so I apologize for that.
No, that's okay.
But, okay, so if the applicants wish, they can... We just have a few housekeeping things to finish up on our regular meeting.
Okay, so you're all set with us then, right?
Yes. If you have any questions in the meantime, you can always reach me or talk to Mike Demato.
Okay, again, thank you, Commission.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Okay, so we have approval of the meeting, this is actually the October 13th, 2020 meeting. It's been like 10 months, I did send those out, there in the correction that was made was it was not a team's meeting, it was a Zoom meeting. Was anybody wish to have those minutes read? This one, okay. Do I have a motion to accept them as they stand?
I would make the motion.
Others in favor?
I'll second.
Second. Others in favor?
I.
I.
Okay. That's okay, the next meeting will be September 15th, 2021. Hopefully we'll have some additional business by then. Go to a German, is there anything anybody would like to bring up, discuss or anything of that sort?
Because these meetings are a little bit difficult.
Yes.
That was a good write-up.
Everything can be recorded, so if anybody has any interest, they can go back in to the website, the town website and pull this up and see all the, whatever it is, the applications, listen to us chatting, trying to be heard. So maybe at some point we'll get back to in-person meetings. It doesn't look like that's gonna happen anytime soon, unfortunately.
Keith, is it possible to use Zoom next time? Because I can't hear very well. I can set it up if you want, but is that Jean?
Hi, I do Zoom meetings all the time. I have no issue with my computer or my iPad or anything with Zoom.
With, if I might, Mr. Chairman, we would be happy to use Zoom if a license was available. The, there are a couple of other meetings that were booked using our Zoom license, so you guys were forced over to go-to meeting. So I apologize, but we'll hopefully get you higher on the, higher on the technology hierarchy next time.
Would it make a difference?
I mean, John, I use go-to meeting too also and I haven't had this problem before, so I don't know what's going on, but maybe because... On somebody else's account, apparently. I don't know what is happening.
Well, Susan, if they save a charge on their... Since my, you know, this time some hacker got in.
I'll have to call Marty and apologize, but I don't know why it's hap... Maybe if I log off, hopefully he'll remember his password.
So if somebody has any questions, and thank you, Bob, for being certain to fill in, but this is some of the things that... Hopefully, you know, we have, we've avoided having a June hearing because not having enough bodies to do, it has happened in the past. And of course, I would like to have at least five people voting because it takes four affirmative votes and no variance to be given. And if it fails, then we're kind of like out of luck for all time. So having, making sure we have enough bodies around, so people get the best chance. for all time, so having, making sure we have enough bodies around, so people get the best chance they have. So, well, I thank everybody, and we'll see each other again until October thousand thirty-two. We never know. But, well, I wish everyone well, and thank you again. And so if I can have, I guess we could go to adjournment then, if it's time. Seven thirty-six. Susan, thank you for making the notes.
Yes.